Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the extremely well-attended July 2nd City Council Meeting. Appreciate you all being here. Mayor, would you call the roll?
Richardson.
I'm here.
Sorry.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning Pastor Peterson will give our prayer.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly most gracious Father, we come before you. And Father God, we know that you know everything. You know how to fix everything. You know how to lead everything. And Father, this morning, I just pray that this city learns to how to follow you, follow your plan and path. And Father, and put it into practical act of practice. And I thank you, Lord God, for our new city manager. Pray blessings over him. And Father, we just welcome him with open arms. And Father, we just thank you for all the council members, the things they do, the work they do. And Father, we just thank you for the wisdom they have. And Father, we just pray for wisdom for each and every person. And Father, we just thank you for the employees that we have here. We have some wonderful employees. And I just pray blessings over them and help them to do the job they need to do. And I just thank you, Father God, that this is a blessed day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Next item. I would ask those of you that are here to receive this proclamation to meet me at the podium. Come on in, gather around. All right. What a crowd. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Park and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, the expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses with crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters, climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the City of Hutchinson recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, I Greg Fast, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Hutchinson. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. There you have it. Tony, would you like to say a few words? Congratulations.
Tony Finley, Hutch Rec. Justin, I'll be up in just a second. Definitely this, this group behind us, they're the ones that work so everybody else can play. They're out there in the heat of the day preparing parks, ballfields, all the things, working evenings, weekends, so our community can enjoy, enjoy recreation and everything that, the benefits from that. So definitely a shout out to this crew. They're worth acknowledging and proud of them. Justin?
Good morning. Justin Coles, Director of Parks and Facilities. Tony and I definitely were thinking the same thing as we were talking about our, our comments for this morning. First, I just want to say thank you to City Council. You know, it's, it's fun to, to celebrate those great big things we do. You know, the, the bike parks and the new playgrounds and those sorts of things. But really, the work by City Council is done on budgets. And when you view Parks and Recreation as a necessity, it's something that we need for a vibrant community. It's not just the icing on, on top of the cake. So thank you for that. You know, we are in, in the thick of budgeting. So that's really where those things come out. So I truly appreciate the support you've provided me and Hutch Rec over the last many years. So the other thing I want to talk about is, you know, like I said, we, we oftentimes get distracted or we see these big things we're doing and we forget about the little things, little things that make our park and recreation work every day. So behind me, we have an incredible team from both organizations. And I just want to hit a few highlights of things that the park staff do on a daily basis that oftentimes go unnoticed. You know, first is our maintenance group. We have a couple from our maintenance group here. This is an extremely talented group. Do everything from ground-up construction to making sure the lights are on when you walk in, you know, the daily cleaning, all those sorts of things that truly you just expect to happen. You expect the lights to come on when you walk in. Also to our horticulture and forestry group, we have a couple full times. We have one seasonal here as well. We really rely on our seasonals for our grounds maintenance. When you exit today, I just challenge you to look at the landscape around this building. They've absolutely knocked it out of the park on this building, downtown, lots of other places. So that group is incredibly important for the beautification of our community. We also have representatives from the zoo staff here. You know, everybody loves going to the zoo. You love seeing the new otters, those sorts of things. But you forget about when it's 110 degrees out, that we still have zookeepers out there cleaning the enclosures, making sure animals are cared for. The golf course, we have a representative from the golf course. You know, you expect when you walk in to be greeted by a smiling face, for them to know your name if you're a routine customer, to have, you know, the shirts and the shoes that maybe you want and, and to, to help, help make that good, good experience. Ballfields, we have a representative from Fun Valley. You know, the tournaments and those things are awesome when you can get out and play. But do you ever think about who's mowing the grass? Who's chalking the lines? Who's making sure it's a safe environment for those games? Pool, we have Jose here who, who takes care of our pools. You know, again, it's fun to see the new slides when we put in new things and when we refurbish things. But you know, we start preparing the pool in February. I mean, nobody thinks about how much time that takes. And you expect the water to be clear and clean when you show up. You expect, expect the, you know, the pool to be in good, good condition. And the last piece we have is our administration piece. And really, if you've ever rented any of our facilities, if you've ever used any of our parks, you know, that's kind of the glue that holds everything together. So it is a huge team effort. And I, I know I only highlighted park staff. Hutch Rec plays just a bigger role in that, in that as, as my staff does. So again, thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for giving me probably more time than I planned to take. But it's important to me. And I'm absolutely amazed by the folks standing behind us and super excited that you're all able to make it out today. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Tony, and thank you, Justin, for all you do. And thank you to all of you for being here. This, this makes a huge statement and it is important what we do. And thank you for what you do. All right. Next item, please.
Good morning. Carissa Paxton, Housing Program Coordinator. I am going to introduce you to some of our housing partners today. Let them do a majority of this presentation and then I'm gonna come in at the end and give you an update on some other items and put it all in a neat little bow. So today with me, I have Clint Nelson, Interfaith Housing, and Bill Lampit from South Central Kansas Economic Development District, also known as SED.
Good morning, Mayor Fast and council members. Clint Nelson, CEO, Interfaith Housing and Community Services. Privileged to be here today and share some of the successes that we've had utilizing the federal ARPA funds for housing improvements throughout the county. I'm gonna attempt to share not only our successes, but some of the lessons that we've learned along the way. And as Carissa mentioned, some really strong partnerships that have developed from having this, this new funding source and, and performing this volume of work. A little bit of background just to set it up. So May of 2021, both the county and the city received their federal prime ARPA awards. At that time, Hutch Community Foundation was enlisted to manage community input sessions and, and really consolidate data on priority interest and identify childcare, economic development, and housing as those top three priorities. Interfaith was approached on the county side to submit a housing plan, which we did mid-2022, and then officially went under a contract agreement February of 2023. So to kind of give you a little, little setup there, we're less than a year and a half in actual performance period. So I'll give you a second to read that vision. I think we can all agree, this is a, a solid, bright vision for Hutchinson's housing in Reno County as well. The core of our plan was an expansion of our homeowner repair and rehab program. And I'll get into a little bit more of that in another slide. As well as just looking at the priorities within our proposal, we had expansion of our homeowner rehab as well as creative micro projects in kind of quick projects around the community as well as acquisition rehab. And just really for Interfaith, this was a, a first opportunity to be very proactive and, and run kind of a high-volume version of a program that we've had for many years. This map here, thanks to Julia and SED, they've been tracking the work we've done here. I believe this is just Hutch proper. Is that right? So about 150 homes that we've impacted in, in 14 months here in Hutchinson. I mean, take note, I would like you to take note that these aren't all just consolidated to the older core neighborhoods in the southern part of town. But through this, this program in, in the relaxed qualifier, as far as income and geographic location, we've been able to touch on many houses on the 17th area as well as north of 17th. I think it's critical that we have programs and funds that not only serve low and very low-income residents, but we also kind of hit those, those middle neighborhood locations and some of that housing deterioration. So 150 homes have been, have been touched by this program so far. I believe community impact starts with solution-minded leaders. I think that's absolutely what we have right now. Feel a new energy from the city, from the county, a willingness to listen to your, to your local nonprofits, your agencies, some of the, those industries that have been out here doing the work. And then, and the ability to invest in the change, invest in new ideas, and allow us to really expand on our work. So that's, that's been a huge benefit to having this federal fund. Got a little chart here. Looks like it's modified, so I might need a second to read it. But basically, what it, what it depicts is a four-year sampling for Interfaith of our homeowner repair and rehab program. You can see we would average about 50 projects per year on a very marginal budget. A lot of thanks to United Way of Reno County, the Hutch Community Foundation, Reno County Department of Aging. Really, our, our $40,000, $50,000 annual budget came from those supportive, those support agencies. And when we're spending $800 per average on a rehab project, that's covering materials. That's a ramp. That's patching a roof. That's a accessibility upgrade for a senior. But very much focused on senior and disabled needs and kind of urgent health and safety issues and volunteer-driven. So that's the 30-year history of that program. Through the ARPA funds, we've been able to transition that into a largely contractor-performed program. And we are averaging $11,059 per project. And you can see as well, on average, we've leveraged about 60 cents on the dollar of other funds. Bill with SED is gonna talk a little bit more about that. So about a $17,000 average per rehab project. So a little bit about our, our repair and rehab program or that piece of the ARPA program. Through our ARPA proposal, we had estimated that we would spend about $25,000 per project. And those were our, our project goals. We, we had a goal of achieving 330 completed projects during the performance period. We're, right now, we're at 217 projects. Those have either been completed and closed out, or they've went out to bid tour. We've signed contracts. And, you know, not only this program, but the, the for-profit world has really kind of stretched our local contractor base pretty lean. And so e- every good contractor that does solid quality work, they're four to six months behind right now. So we're attempting to get out in front of that, help them kind of fill out their schedule for the next year by doing multiple bid tours and getting, getting projects under contract, getting in the queue. Hutchinson by far has been the biggest consumer of this program. We've pushed it out. We marketed it the same way to the entire county. We've had a couple rural communities, Bueller, Nickerson, Prey, Prey Arlington, that have had a healthy appetite for it. And they've really spent down kind of their piece of the funding. The other smaller county communities have been a little more difficult to kind of build that, that trust and that relationship. And, you know, our goal is to not go out there and tell them which unit need, which house needs fixed, but to kind of help them identify the houses that they would like to renovate. But Hutchinson, I mean, the, the response, the application response was by far exceeded our expectations. We have went through right about $1.7 million in Hutchinson. And we've still got a, a healthy waiting list of, of additional needs. Another line within our ARPA proposal was acquisition rehab. These are three examples of Interfaith acquisition rehab. All three of these houses were off-market. All of them had been sitting for at least three to four years. Slightly different reasons why they were setting vacant, but you can see the, the most southern location is there on 7th and Adams. And then we've got a property on 17th. And then we've got one ready in wait on West 25th. This line within our budget was only $300,000. And we're talking about the acquisition costs on the property as well as contracted, really a full makeover. We're doing mechanical and structural upgrades as well as aesthetics. And then these houses will be listed. In fact, 17th Street is currently listed. We'll take a fair offer. We'll get a family in there. The house will remain on the tax roll. And really just bring an abandoned house back online. Having a, a project fund like ARPA was critical in, in going out and finding these units and, and acquiring them. We estimate that all of these units will see a assessed value increase of at least 40%. Actually, 17th Street, we bought it, I believe, the actual value was around 90. And now I, I believe it's around 170. So a drastic value increase, kind of restabilizing some of this housing stock. Also mention that through the ARPA program, we've been able to acquire and, and tear down five units in town. These are houses that were beyond the point. They're just really weren't feasible to, to bring back up to quality standards or house fires, reasons why they, we, we determined they should not be rehabbed. And it does leave a vacant lot in its wake. But, you know, a lot of times really is the one eyesore on the block. And something that's been, just been ignored and been able to negotiate a deed acquisition with the owners and then take on the cost of demolition and get those houses cleaned off. Client story that I'll share, Ms. Hamby. So great example of an urgent, not only health and safety need, but also just a, a need that would ultimately continue to make this property unlivable or undesirable. So Ms. Hamby was one of our first participants in ARPA. And a single mother, great job, hard worker, entered into this purchase agreement on her home as the owner financed. There is an equitable deed. It's co-owned. Checked all those boxes for us. And her electrical kept shorting out, so we went out. There was a section of the steel siding on the house that was, that had started to smolder or, or burn. And as they tore into it, realized there was electric, electrical wiring that was actually shorting on the metal siding, had burned a lot of the inner wall and the sheathing. And so that house not only got the electrical system replaced, but, but also new siding and just really restabilized that property. And, and, and her having paid on it for multiple years and close to, to paying off that, that financing and owning it outright. So very appreciative of the work. Great example of a family, of a participant that never would have qualified and been a priority for us within the, the previous version of this program. Touch on brush-up program. So you may know, the City of Hutch has had a brush-up Hutch program for a number of years. We, we have had a season or two in the past where there was strong participation. There was a lot of volunteer involvement. In most recent years, it was really just a handful of projects on the United Way Annual Workday with volunteer groups doing the work. And those homeowners utilize the, the brush-up program as it, as it previously existed. As one of the micro-program kind of creative solutions, we were able to kind of take another look at that program, remake it. We eliminated the reimbursement piece. We upped the total award allowance to 1,500. And we created a voucher-type system. And so Interfaith processes the apps. We checked for primary residency, for proof of ownership. We also checked that they are current with their property taxes. That's been a requirement to participate in this program. In year one in 2023, we issued 95 vouchers throughout the county and spent just under $114,000 with one vendor, one local vendor. And we're covering paint supplies. I think we even allowed them to get a $300 paint sprayer if they had room in their budget. But it's just been tremendous. And, and, and we all know that for a homeowner to, to take this initiative and enter this program and then go out themselves or with family and friends or neighbors and perform the work, that's pride and ownership. And that has an impact on the block. That has an impact on that area of town. This is one family that participated in the brush-up program. I believe this was highlighted a week or so ago in a media release. And it was on the last slide, it was the little, it was the little cottage. It's now navy blue. But very appreciative family to be in this program. Nice little house over on the 400 block of, of West 14th. And again, another example of, of a family that would never have qualified. And again, another example of, of a family that would never have qualified to participate in one of our, our housing programs here locally. Real quick, look at the numbers. We are right now less than a year and a half into the program. Federal regulations allow us to spin this out through the end of 2026. We estimate will be through the four million dollar total that we were allotted by the end of 2025. And actually have all of our closeouts over to the county, and right now we're at two point eight million, that's completed, we're under a contract. To give you an idea of, of where we're going to fall short, we currently have seventy-six qualified applications for the, the major project work, and we believe this fund may stretch to satisfy forty of those projects. So the need continues to be great. We're not actively soliciting new applications, we're not turning them down, we're deferring them or waitlisting them. We're hopeful. You know, in the future, there'll be similar programs that exist and we can continue to maintain this, this result, this momentum. Lastly, before I get off the mic, wanted to mention, I mentioned in the beginning of my, my statement that just, you know, I've been with Interfaith for eighteen years, I've been around the Housing Commission, I've been around council a little bit, and to see the support in the, the desire to share a vision and, and to work together, it's been refreshing in, in, you know, doing large part to having money like this to spend, but I just feel like the energy is right and the conversations are right in the city as a whole is moving in, in a, a good direction right now. And as a local nonprofit, we, we certainly appreciate that. I'm going to give the mic over to Bill Lampy, the Executive Director of SCED.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here again, Mayor and Councilman. A couple of things that we were, really feel is important to highlight today is our leverage funding. And so you saw a previous slide where Clint had identified that we had leveraged around sixty cents to the dollar with our ARPA funding. I think it's important to understand where that funding comes from and how it's utilized. It's been utilized through partnership and development of partnerships locally. Without the help of Aubrey Patterson and her team and those folks at the Hutch Foundation, many of these things couldn't have happened on some of these leverage funding opportunities. The vision of Jim and Mary Grace and now Dave, identifying those needs and where we need to be spending our efforts and doing our work has been crucial to making sure we're in the right places. Obviously with, with Interfaith, local code enforcement, and even our county commission and council, all that wouldn't be possible when you see these hundred and fifty houses that were touched with ARPA funds. It really does take a full community of people to kind of bring these options and opportunities together to see it fully embarked. Weatherization has been available to the city of Hutch and greatly leveraged for many years. We have seen our deferral rates, which I think is important to note, go from over fifty percent to under ten percent at this point. And these leverage funds are allowing those additional eight to ten thousand dollars in funds from just that program alone to come in and address issues that reduce energy bills and repairs and such that those individuals just couldn't do otherwise. This program here has really allowed us to expand services. When you see the eleven thousand dollars spent, that's an ARPA dollar amount. So when you count those leverage funds, we're well above sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars per house on the service they're receiving. Most of these applicants and, and folks being served, I think sometimes we get caught up in the, well, it's just a few dollars they can't afford, but we're talking fifteen, sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars in repairs. That work is being utilized through local contractors. Their products are being purchased at local vendors, they're buying their food in Hutchinson, they're living in Hutchinson. The economic impact here i- is immeasurable. There is a recent study that indicates the average home built in America brings forty-one thousand dollars in, in economic growth to the community. Well, obviously, we're not on that scale with rehab, but when you see a hundred and fifty projects and you know what those totals are, you can see that there's a great economic impact from a tax perspective, from a vendor perspective, from our, our local restaurants and grocery stores. So I just ask that you guys kind of remember all the other support that the rest of the community is even throwing at, at programs like this, so we're really proud of that. Today, we're going to show a video of one of our local contractors, so you can kind of hear from them how that's affected his business. Show me how to do that, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, it's all right. Not you. Any, no. All right, well, we'll keep moving on. So, so Nathan DeBerry owns an electrical and general contracting business? So Nathan owns a local contracting business. He has done the second resurgence project and was a partner on our first as well for electrical services. He's been involved in numerous projects with the other ARPA funding. When you hear his story, and it talks about his ability to grow his company and to bring additional employees on that he didn't have before, and the amount of jobs that he has backlog for his company to see growth, he's one of many. And as Clint alluded to, we have numerous contractors who, when we started, could go to work in a week or two. And now we're seeing that there's sixty, ninety, hundred and twenty day work setback. But we're also seeing some, some indirect effects that I think are important to look at. Some of these neighborhoods where this work is happening, you're seeing other people come out and start cleaning up their homes and they're, whether that's they're paying it, or they're doing it themselves, this is going to increase property values. This is one of those things that we're planning to see today, and we'll start to see how that affects property values in years to come. But you can drive up and down the streets, if you look at the map, and you can see the impact that the community is getting from the housing program. So it's just been a great opportunity. We appreciate the support of, of all the local contractors and vendors and obviously our partnerships. So again, thank you for having us out today. I'll let you go ahead and wrap up.
So what I have for you is a lot of words, and I do not have any awesome pictures for, for this slide here, but I have a lot of really important information, so if you'll just bear with me. So in addition to the amazing work between Interfaith and SCED, I am excited to share with you the recent progress that has been made with the additional ARPA funding that was allocated for housing in our community. Our strategic initiatives, focus on collaboration and targeted investments are already making a profound impact on our community's housing landscape. I'm calling that impact profound because money spent on housing doesn't just live and die in that house. It goes directly to suppliers, vendors, contractors, local jobs, and ultimately equity for the property owner. That equity provides financial stability, supplements investment and retirement accounts, leaves a legacy for our residents. Research from the American Planning Association shows that every dollar invested into affordable housing creates two dollars and thirty cents in economic activity. That's only the statistic on affordable housing, but imagine if all of our investments had returns like that. So the first thing on my list is the Landmark Building. They have secured funding from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, and they are in the process of layering in a bunch of additional funds and incentives, and they're really excited to get started. You'll be hearing a lot more about this project in the coming weeks, but it's going to be a bright spot in our downtown scene. It's not only going to bring additional housing and commercial space to Hutchinson, but restore one of our most beautiful buildings that has sat empty for long enough. The Leon Apartments have replaced an outdated cooling system, and this has provided better living conditions for thirty-three affordable housing units in Hutchinson. That's thirty-three apartments, families, residents, where we know that families aren't overheating in the Kansas summer. New Beginnings has secured the needed gap funding to begin constructing their small home project. So this provides two homes that will be completed by October, but it also provides a roadmap for developing other homes on our infill lots. So the lots that they're using to construct these small homes on are land bank properties. So this is going to give us the, the building blocks, the foundation to, to continue infill development in a strategic way. We often talk about aging in place, and that's where seniors are living in their homes longer than previous generations, typically past the point in life where they aren't able to care for their homes alone and sometimes not able to care for themselves. It limits the number of homes that are available for sale, and it also causes issues with deferred maintenance. It leaves our seniors living in poor conditions. So Wesley Towers is going to work on providing some additional space. They are right in the middle of renovating the currently unused Asbury Apartments. That is a nine-unit apartment that will, they will be able to fill with seniors from our area, so creating nine more spaces at Wesley Towers frees up some of our housing stock and making sure that they can get the proper care and housing to the seniors who are currently on the waiting list. The waiting list at Wesley Towers is ninety-three names long, and most of them are Hutchinson residents. So those units will be available by the end of August. The Hut Rec has launched a block-by-block investment program, which has encouraged neighbors in groups of three to five to get together and make exterior improvements to their homes. They're revitalizing our streetscapes, encouraging pride of ownership in our community. The goals of this program were to stimulate investment by owners and landlords. It builds resident leadership capacity and encourages positive neighbor-to-neighbor interactions and relationships. This program was so well utilized in the first round that the Housing Commission allocated additional ARPA funds for this program so it can run again in 2025. The block-by-block program provided a fifty percent match, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars for exterior improvements. Neighbors repair fences, porches, soffits, retaining walls, paint, sidewalk repairs. The first round of applications, we got to approve over twenty thousand dollars in grants, and it resulted in over fifty-five thousand in investments to seventeen different homes all south of Eleventh. Another very important piece of the housing puzzle is data. So we've worked really hard to address our housing stock, internal and external property conditions, aging in place, and future development. We have seen and will continue to see increases in property values, additional homes contributing to the tax base, job creation, and many more benefits. But we want to make sure that we continue to put our energy in the right places. So in partnership with Reno County and the city of South Hutchinson, we are in the process of completing a county-wide housing needs assessment. Some of you may have gotten emails from me about it over the last few weeks. So this housing assessment will feature community listening sessions, surveys, and give us a really deep look at our housing stock, our housing values, the availability, and our forecasting. And it'll provide us with a ton of great information on our strengths, our weaknesses, our barriers, and then most importantly, recommendations for moving forward to continue to have sustainable housing in Hutchinson. So those recommendations are like a roadmap, it's a strategic plan for our future, and we'll have an accurate picture of our city when we're pursuing state and federal funding opportunities when it comes to housing and economic development because of the needs assessment. None of these things would have been possible without the support of the council. Your decision to prioritize housing was a far-reaching investment that has touched thousands of people in Hutchinson, spanning all ages, neighborhoods, income levels, lifestyles, levels of need, property owners and tenants alike. We are all affected by the ongoing housing crisis, and this level of funding goes a long way to provide relief to the housing stock and property conditions that we desperately need. Dave Giffen, he is the Executive Director for the American Unhoused Coalition. He has a quote here that I wanted to share with you. He says that "There is no health without housing. There is no safety without housing. There is no prosperity without housing. There is no justice without housing, and there is no hope without housing." After the ARPA funds have been spent, the reporting is done, and the COVID money is a distant memory, we will still have potential to impact thousands more people and homes with your continued support. If Mr. Giffen is right, and housing is the key to safety, health, prosperity, justice, and hope, then by continuing to prioritize housing dollars, Hutchinson can be the place where people come and stay. Continuing to prioritize housing means that we as a city value the safety, health, prosperity, justice, and hope of our residents, and that is a truth that we need to live by. Now lastly, I want to wrap this up by also thanking BauerCom for helping us promote awareness of the investment being made to enhance housing across the community. And this includes the creation of RenoCountyHousing.com. Now, we couldn't show you that video from Nathan DeBerry and his business today, but RenoCountyHousing.com has it, as well as all of the other amazing stories about our housing initiatives. To date, this website has welcomed over twenty-six hundred visitors. In conjunction with these efforts, we've been actively spotlighting success stories that vividly illustrate the transformative impact of our housing projects throughout Hutchinson. By sharing these narratives, our goal is to spread the word on the positive changes taking place within our community, highlight the individuals and families benefiting from these projects, and most importantly, to make sure that the path for others to access these programs is clear and well advertised. We want to impact as many homes as we can, and I, we want all eyes on the programs that our residents can use to improve their homes and their lives today, as well as the lives of our future generations. So thank you for your time today. I look forward to coming back and sharing more progress with you as these ARPA projects continue and wrap up. Bill and Clint and I are happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Carissa. Does the council have any questions?
Um, I don't have a question, these are really, um, but what I do want to point out about the needs assessment that we talked about when the county and the city had our, I think it was our last meeting together, you know, I was, as, as it was kind of presented to us, I was thinking, well, why do we need another study? Like, this seems pointless, it's just one more thing telling us what to do when the solution seems so glaringly obvious, like, we need more housing. But this specific study is going to tell us what type of housing and where in order to have the biggest impact in not, and it is a county-wide study that the county and all entities are paying for. And that will allow us to go after state and federal funds, like you touched on, and that's really important to have that data point to look back on and say, this is why we need that money, and the last study that we did, I think, was in two thousand and nine. So I just, as people are listening, I don't want people to say, oh, this is just another study that we're going to do and it's going to be pointless and we already know what it says. We, I think we, we know what hopefully it says, but we have to have it in order to get the money from the state. So I'm really excited that we're doing that. And another thing that I think is easily overlooked, as you were speaking about Ms. Hamby's home, doing those renovations allows her to be eligible for different insurance products and to be fully insured by a traditional insurance provider that prior to those repairs, she probably wasn't eligible for, and many homes in Hutch and in the county aren't eligible for. So as you drive through town and you see these homes that have a damaged roof, or you can tell there's been fire damage, you know, I used to be an insurance agent for ten years, so the thought is, well, they just file an insurance claim and get that fixed. Well, if they're on certain insurance products, like through the state, they can't because that's not a covered loss. So this allows her to hopefully have better insurance that would cover the contents of the home as well as the structure and be eligible for different perils or different types of losses. So that's just one of the probably benefits that you guys haven't thought about, that you're doing a really good job, and I'm, I'm always excited to hear about this program from you guys.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, appreciate your, your report. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right. Happy birthday, Carissa.
Thank you.
This is a time in the meeting where if you want to address the council, if you're here to address the council, please approach the podium. You have five minutes. We, if it, if it's not on the agenda, now's your time. If it's on the agenda, when we're discussing that agenda item, I'll, I'll ask for if there's any public comment on that. So is there anybody here to speak to the council on something that's not on the agenda? Hello, Carrie.
Good morning, council. I'm Carrie Maye with Hutchinson Community Foundation. I'm thrilled to follow up that presentation because mine is on theme. I'm, I'm here to I'm, I'm here to announce a new community empower, empowerment initiative from Hutchinson Community Foundation called Love Where You Live. But I want to go back to what Clint spoke to about the American Rescue Plan Act process that this is really inspired by. We were so proud, you know, three years ago to work alongside seven of our partner organizations to create this resident engagement process that went into 45 different meetings and engaged 553 residents across the county, diverse populations, to ask them at that time, what, what are your priorities here in fall 2021 when you think about using COVID relief dollars to help our community recover and make progress? And as Clint said at that time, childcare, workforce development, and housing came up as the top three concerns. And we continue to be grateful to the city and the county for listening to the residents and putting so much significant investment from ARPA funds into those projects. I think, as you heard today from housing and a couple of weeks ago from childcare, those funds have really been catalytic capital to help make progress in those huge adaptive challenges in the community. The other thing we really hoped would happen through that process is that, you know, the 553 residents who engaged three years ago would feel heard, they would feel more connected to their community members and to their community leaders, and that they would feel more hope about the future of the community. As we all, I'm sure remember at that time, there were a lot of feelings and, and what we want to do is create opportunities for people to where they can see the future and they can see themselves in the future in their communities. So we come up with this three-year initiative called Love Where You Live that is going to kind of replicate a lot of what we did three years ago, where we're digging into people's feelings about where they live. What we know from the Knight Foundation Soul of the Community Study is that when people feel more attached to their place, when they love their place, they're more likely to invest in their place with all their forms of time, treasure, talents, and they're more likely to feel a sense of connectedness, they're more likely, more likely to be welcoming to others. And so we want to further catalyze that all across Reno County. The three-year process starts with a survey. I, I know we can get surveyed out in this community, so I don't want to detract from the housing survey and listening sessions. But this one particularly is, again, talking, asking people about their perceptions. How do they feel about where they live? And that's what we want to benchmark over the next three years. So it starts with a survey, which is open now at RenoSurvey.com. There's an English version, a Spanish version online, and there's also paper copies of English and Spanish that we can make available. It's about 10-minute survey. Again, what we'll hear from that are people's perceptions, what they find special about their community, who are their admired leaders in the community, what do they think about the sense of future and envisioning that their communities have, and what's their belief in that coming true. Once we get the survey results, we will then go through a process of resident gatherings again in the fall where we hope the same people who take the survey and even more come out and be in community to hear about what's going on in the community, to, to listen to what came out of the survey, prioritize those results, and then start to generate ideas for how to make further action. If, a phrase we've been using for the last 10 or so years is to help people go beyond wanting to doing. We really want to inspire collaborative action. And so that's the next phase. We will, we will then help people spark ideas and generate projects, experiments to make progress on those priorities. And then in early 2025, we look forward to hearing grant proposals for those projects and putting our fund for Reno County grants to use in that way, but also leveraging other donor funds and, and other funders in the community and outside the community to help make progress. And then we'll do that again for two more years. And we really hope that through this process, people will feel a sense of progress and want to engage with it and feel more connected and attached to their communities. So right now, my ask of you is, will you, will you take the survey yourselves? You'll see this around town. Love Where You Live is QR code, or you can go to RenoSurvey.com. But then just to all residents, people here, if you can go there and take it, share it with your household and your, the groups that you're a part of. You can help us reach our goals for, for a number of responses. We want to reflect the demographics of the community and in Hutchinson specifically, get up to at least 400 responses. So we're excited to share this process with you and the results with you over time.
All right. Well, thank you, Carrie.
Yep.
I promise to take the survey. Anybody else here would like to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Next item, please.
I have a question. Paul, the, the license agreement with Home Again, that's the first time I've ever seen that. It's for a property on South Main that a guy is working on. What is?
Termites traps in the sidewalk.
Okay. I've never seen that on the consent agenda before.
They come up all the time, but we haven't.
Okay. All right. Very good. So it's basically permission to use the sidewalk to treat termites. Okay. Anything, you guys have any questions?
I've read through. You don't have any questions?
No.
All right. How about a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
All right.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item, please.
I'm submitting a public hearing, a public hearing to consider establishing, establishing a reinvestment in housing initiative incentive to the city inside the city.
Good morning, Council. Dave Satello, Director of Strategic Growth.
Hold on. Point of order. Do we make our motion to open the hearing before he presents? Okay. I move to resume the public hearing.
I will second that.
Richardson.
Yes.
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 Way to go there and making sure we follow procedure. Dave Satello, Director of Strategic Growth, still. Council, this morning, I'm here to ask an extension of the public hearing to the first meeting in August. We actually have the date here of July 2024, so the next council meeting, and I want to make sure I get my dates right, so I'm going to look at that right now. August 6th, asking you to extend it to August 6th to make sure that we have all the documents in place, ready to go for you to approve for that public hearing. At this point, we still don't have those documents in, in place, ready for you to review. We're waiting on a, working and waiting on developer on some of those items. Mr. Strawn is here, so he can give you some updates of where we're at, but we just want to make sure you have enough time to take a look at those and, and we're comfortable with the development agreement and the grant agreement through MIH and RHID. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but I'll let Mr. Strawn come to the podium as well.
Thank you. Jim Strawn. The process of getting streets built and, and the first time RHID in, in Hutchinson that I know of, it's taken us a little while for both sides to kind of learn and go through some of the processes that we've had to go through. We've also changed some of the ways we do our subdivisions. And so we've worked through with the engineers and I will say, we've worked on this project for quite a long time and I think we're really, really close. But some of the few details that we are just working out right now is just making sure all of the names that are on the land and the contracts and miscellaneous items throughout the time are all in, in line. And we had a little bit of a challenge with some changes that we are now putting a trickle ditch in the backyards of our, in our subdivisions so that we have good drainage on the homes when they're built. And we've done it a couple of different ways. We've used an underground pipe and, and we've gone from that to what we call a trickle ditch. And so there's a small, about a, probably about an 18-inch to 24-inch wide curb that's in the back of their house. It's just a little swell like this. It's made of concrete. And the lawyers and the engineers wanted to make sure that the, the city wasn't responsible for that. So it's taken us some time to go through the homeowners association and the restrictive covenants and make the changes that we needed to make to, to make sure that the homeowners are now responsible for the trickle ditch and things along that line. And, and so the details, I've got my HOA back and, and things back from the lawyer I got at yesterday. The engineers, I mean, the surveyors are done with the MYLR, but there was a, a name that was wrong and a date that was wrong, or I'd have had that with me. So we're, we're, we're just that close. So anyway, with that being said, I don't have a real long program like some of the other folks did this morning. It was pretty, pretty nice programs. Anyway, is, is there any questions that I could answer for you all? Okay. Well, that's kind of why we've had the delay and, and we, it's just, it's just in the details.
Well, we'll certainly let you come back, I think, and hopefully on the 6th or this, yeah, August 6th, that'll be done.
So the motion is just to extend the hearing to August 6th?
I, I do have a question for you, Dave. You mentioned that you have documents and you want us to have adequate time to review them. Will we receive those before the 6th when we get our agenda packet?
You'll receive them with your agenda packet, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I need a motion to continue this hearing until August 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Darza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Next item, please.
70, public hearing determining the advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds on behalf of Sullivan Investments LLC.
Hey, I need a motion to open the meeting. The hearing.
I'd make a motion to open the public hearing. I'll second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Darza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. On May 21st, City Council held a public hearing and approved a resolution determining the advisability for IRBs for Sullivan Investments LLC for the Gun Bros. project. Unfortunately, the letters that are required to be mailed to USD 308 in Reno County were not mailed before the public hearing as required. Therefore, we have to rehold the public hearing. We did mail the letters and the publication was republished in the Hutchinson News. Why this happened was our city clerk was not copied on the email with those notices to be mailed out. I apologize for the oversight. I didn't realize she was not copied, but we have double-checked that everything has been done correctly this time. In addition, at the prior meeting, we did not have the pilot agreement ready for you to approve. It is now in your packet. We are recommending approval of the 10-year pilot agreement as they have proposed. They will apply for a property tax exemption for the, with the Board of Tax Appeals for 10 years. If the City Council agrees to this, city staff would recommend approving the resolution and authorizing the mayor to sign all related documents, including the pilot agreement. I will open it up for any questions or any public comment.
Is there anybody that has a comment from the audience on this matter? Council, any questions?
No.
No.
All right. How about a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Darza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss. Yes.
Yes. Next item.
Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions. A, consider resolution authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for Sullivan Investments LLC project.
Okay. At this time, I'd consider a motion.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the City of Hutchinson, Kansas to issue its industrial revenue bonds, Series 2024, Sullivan Investments LLC project for the purpose of the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of an industrial facility and authorizing other related documents and, and actions and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Richardson.
Epstein.
Darza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss. Yes.
Yes. Next item.
Item A, consider resolution fixing a hearing date and time for unsafe structures in the hotel and conference room.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Enrico Vegas, City Manager. So before you is a resolution that would fix a date and time for the Atrium Hotel. It is the recommendation of staff that we declare the building unsafe and dangerous. So before I get into the, the presentation, it's going to be very brief, to which I will try to refrain from making any comment or dialogue about the pictures and the video. The point of that is so that you can make your own unbiased opinions about what you'll see. So to provide some context and really some supplemental information to the staff memorandum that our building official put together, which I won't repeat what was in there. Unfortunately, there are some misconceptions about the Atrium Hotel and its relationship to the city, so I'll at least try to address some of those that are the most popular. Number one, the city does not own the Atrium Hotel. There were attempts a few years ago before my time for the city to purchase the Atrium Hotel, but unfortunately, it was unsuccessful due to the findings of asbestos and the cost to abate the saint. A second misconception is that we are only doing this now because the city is due money in the form of unpaid fines. But as you'll see, that when it comes to safety, the unpaid fines is at this point irrelevant. And then finally, there is another misconception that the city can just demo a building at will. There is a due process that we're going to follow and step one tonight is to issue a resolution or today is to issue a resolution. And then the second step is to actually have the public hearing where all the evidence will be provided by both parties, the city and the property owner, lien holders, or any other interested parties of the Atrium Hotel. So those are some of the misconceptions that I felt needed to be addressed. Part of the other facts that I would like to share, over the course of a few years, the city has had to be the responsible party to board up the facility. So that was largely due to at least deter vandalism, which unfortunately has been unsuccessful as vandals will remove the boarding and enter in. And a byproduct of that, police officers have to make routine visits to the atrium to kind of circle the building just to ensure no one is inside. And then down to little things like mowing grass. That is something that, a service that the city has been providing to the property. So all of that puts considerable strain on our limited resources. We should not have to be patrolling the atrium when we could be patrolling the streets, for example. So with, with that in mind, if we could get the presentation. So this is a picture of our hazmat team, or at least members of our hazmat team, not pictured here. We did have members of our SWAT team that were also in hazmat suiting, as well as, in the interest of full disclosure, myself and the mayor, we did suit up in hazmat attire and we did enter the facility with our staff members because we wanted to see it for ourselves, the condition of the building. And we did this on June 21st at around 8:30 in the morning when we entered. But I would also like to share that the night before, four juveniles did enter the building. That was documented within our CAD system. They entered in, they entered in almost the same place that we did on the northwest side. So there is an element of urgency here with respect to the health, safety, and welfare of our community. Next slide, please. The green check marks that you see on the screen, and this is just kind of a, an overview of the, of the building. The green checks are the areas that we had gone in and inspected. We did not, we did not inspect everything, but we did get a general sense of what the condition of the inside of this building looks like. And so just for transparency, that was kind of the route that we took. So, next slide. Am I able to control it from here? Am I able to control it from here? Here is a, again, here is a video, so just imagine if you were the staff member holding We did have a drone fly over the facility, and then there's just a general condition of what the rooftop looks like. At this point, it's hard to tell whether that's just through the pipes bursting, the water pipes bursting, or rust, or any other thing going on, but that is what the condition of the rooftop looks like. And I did forget to mention, but it is important, that prior to us entering into the building, we were briefed on, in the event that we discovered a deceased body, that's what our response would be in the event that we find a meth lab, what our response would be to that. And also to be conscientious of what was, of what's called a dead load. So, say if the ceiling above you is structurally compromised, just to be mindful that if something were to fall and crush on you. So, just kind of be aware of your surroundings. So, that was kind of our mentality as we were entering here. That's just general picture of the hallway, and it is important to note that that's what really all of the hallways looked like. Everything was just kind of ripped apart and stripped of all of the copper piping or any other valuables inside of the building. Unfortunately, got cut off a little, but what you see there are mold spores, heavy presence of black mold. We did inspect 47 rooms. Of the 47 rooms, 81% of them did have a heavy presence of black mold. Just general damage in the building. And finally, and probably one of the more disturbing things that we did discover, that there was evidence that someone is more than likely actively sleeping there. It's, it's one thing to hear it, but it, truth be told, it hits differently when you see it. And so, there were what appeared to be freshwater bottles, bag of pretzels and chips that were near the bed. And so, again, in the genuine interest of safety, this is kind of really why we're here. And this is the, the end of the presentation. I would also, you know, stand for any questions that you may have behind me. We're also members of our hazmat team, and so they can also help address any of the safety questions if you have them. So, thank you.
I don't have any questions in regards to conditions for the building. I do have questions or some clarification, I think it would be good in regards to the process of condemnation, how the financial aspects of condemnation work, that, what the city's role in it is versus, I don't believe we have any interest in actually owning this property. I think it's more of, we need to step in, take care of the building, and try to put it back into the private sector. Can we talk to that a little bit to try to clarify that for our citizens?
Yes, and for that, I'll defer to our legal counsel.
Yes, this resolution today just actually sets the hearing date. And we have to publish that for two consecutive weeks. And then...
And the hearing date has to be, further away, the hearing date has to be 30 days after the second publication. So, the soonest we can hear this is August 20. And at that point, if you decide that it is determined to be an unsafe building after the hearing has occurred, there's a resolution that you adopt to, to indicate that. And then, just like our other demos we've done in past years, there's a time for the individual to, to remedy the situation, to, to make it a, that a certificate of occupancy can be issued. And some of those have gone on for a long time, but that's at the council's determination. Maximum in the, in the ordinance is 120 days. And assuming there is no remediation of the problem, not bringing it up to it can have a certificate of occupancy, then we would engage in demolition of the property. You have to remove the asbestos and other toxic chemicals, and then take the building down. The expenses of the city, if they are not paid within a number of days after the notice is issued, then those are assessed back against the property along with taxes. And then it depends on if someone pays them, if they don't ultimately pay them down the road and ends up at a tax sale.
So, the city would never actually own the property at all in this situation?
The only way the city would own the property is if we bid in our expenses at the tax sale.
Okay.
What is the minimum amount of time we can give this owner to remediate all the things?
Have to check on that. I think it's 30 days. But realistically, we know because of the nature of the problem, nothing's going to happen in 30 days.
Well, six months, and it's not going to happen either.
Yes.
It's my editorial comment.
To be frank.
Yeah.
No, to be frank.
It was, was it February of '22 that we walked away? We, he wasn't communicating with us when we walked away from, it was right, it was right about two years ago, double over two years ago.
Right, it was right up there.
So, we had an offer on the table for about 1.6 to buy the property with the intent of tearing it down, and we found the asbestos, and we tried to renegotiate $540,000 off the purchase price, and there was zero communication, so we just walked away.
That's accurate.
Okay.
So, if the property changes ownership while we're in the middle of these hearings and giving him time to abate, does that restart the clock, or?
No.
Okay.
Because the findings that you make are filed with the Register of Deeds, so anyone buying the property has legal notice of it when they do the type search.
Where would we be in line with other lien holders on the property at the sale?
Well, you'd be behind existing mortgages.
All right. I think that puts a little understanding behind it.
Appreciate it.
And, you know, just, just to reiterate, the goal here is not to own this property. The goal here is to make a safe spot. Are there any other comments that, that staff may have, Chief Beer, anyone? And then there may be somebody in the audience that would like to speak.
Yeah, I would say that for the fire department, for my men and women, that this building, we put an alert in our CAD system already on the building. There's no water to the place, the sprinkler system is, is non-existent. In fact, the post indicator valve, we confirmed that this week, is shut off on the east side of the property, which controls the sprinkler system. So, unless we actually see somebody, like the mayor or the city managers brought up the night before we entered, go into the building where we know we have a possible rescue or something, we are not going to enter that building. It, and we fill it with smoke and stuff, it's a suicide mission. And so, my men and women will be defensive operations only. Mike, I don't know if you want to say anything from your perspective or not?
It hasn't had, it hasn't had any, any type of system, alarm system, sprinkler system for almost three years. And so, even if he wants to do something, it would, it would take a, an enormous amount to get that, this building back up to where it needs to be. So, they lost the sprinkler system because of frozen pipe. And so, with everybody that has been going in and out over the years now, they've just continued to cut that pipe, take that pipe out, along with any wiring for alarm systems and everything else in there, so it would take quite a bit to get this back up to where it needs to be.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Anybody else in the audience have a comment or would like to speak and address the counsel? Name and address.
Yes, Chris Shank, 3817 Mission Drive is where we live. And then, of course, we've got the radio station on 10 East 5th, and then 1500 North Lorain, right next to the atrium. You know, we opened Hutch Putt in the summer of '17, so it's already been seven years. Actually, just, yeah, we opened, I think Dad said we wanted to open by the, sometime in June, we opened June 30th of '17, so we hit that deadline barely. But, so we're going on seven years, and we do also own property directly to the east of the atrium. So, there's nobody in town that, I mean, we have, we are right next to it, and we've spent more than seven years right next to it. Even before it closed, that place was going downhill, and I, I brought in some of our staff here, because I, you know, our staff at Hutch Putt is primarily, you know, high school and college age kids, and so I want to introduce some of these people because they're the ones out there every single day. We've got our two managers here, Peyton Huffman, he's back there in the corner, and my daughter Juliette Shank, and then Jessa Loso, she's been, how many years have you been with us, Jessa?
Um, a couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of years. I'm very passionate about this. Some of the city council members have gotten calls. Those of you that, I don't have your cell phone number, be glad, because...
Did you delete mine?
Yes.
No.
I feel, I feel bad, but I know this, this spring, we had an instance where, in Hutch Putt, we have seen just the neighborhood deteriorate, and I feel really sorry for the people that live directly west of the atrium, over there on Lorain, and, you know, all the stuff that people were talking about earlier about improving homes, you know. Ultimately, we all live here, you can only live in one place. That place deteriorating just puts a drag on the entire neighborhood. I mean, we've seen it, you know, I know with my staff, it's all younger kids, you know, they're out there busting their hump every day, picking up trash, weed eating, picking up rocks, and I cannot tell you how demoralizing it is to try to keep a nice looking place, and then there's just this ugly albatross sitting right there. And when we have people come in from out of state or out of town, you know, I'm just out there visiting, and people aren't from here, like, what the heck's going on there? Why aren't they doing something? And so, I can't tell you thank you enough. I mean, I thought about writing something down, but just, this is something that means a ton to us, because I drive by this place every day, going from my house to work, you know, we look at it every day when I'm at Hutch Putt, and it's, I mean, it's a danger thing. I know that Chief Beer was talking about it. You know, there's people coming in and out of there all the time. We've had homeless camping out on our ground, we've had to call the cops. I want to compliment the police, because they've been very responsive. I just started telling my Hutch Putt kids, for years, we didn't call the cops every time there was something scary, but I started telling them, don't call me, just call 911, because there's, you know, and I'm not trying to grandstand or anything, but it's, it's something that a city government exists to try to benefit the whole community, and that structure being the way it is, and you guys know, I mean, it, it makes our whole town look bad. And, I mean, it going away is something that will benefit everybody. I mean, it, it just, it's dangerous, it's ugly, and I cannot tell Enrico enough, and I haven't had the chance, I want to give a compliment to Enrico, I haven't even got a chance to meet him in person, but we've tried to talk to people for years about this, nothing's really happened, we've just kind of been throwing roadblocks. You know, I sent him an email, and he responded like within two hours, and just been very responsive, and so I just thank you so much for somebody taking up the, because we don't have the time to, obviously, you know it's going to be a daunting project, and just a small business owner, I don't have the financial wherewithal or, you know, time to, to do something about this, but we just, I don't know, hopefully I'm not rambling too much, but I just thank you, and just, I just wanted to come here today to know that there's lots of people that, when that thing finally goes away, people will be cheering. And I think our families just had bad luck, because we were right next to the Wiley Building for years, so it's a Shank family tradition of owning, owning property next to big, ugly buildings owned by people from out of state that don't care about our town. But I just, you just think about the Wiley Building, how much that has changed downtown Hutch, you think about how negative that was, I mean, our stations were right next to that for years. I just, I cannot tell how passionate, I mean, it will benefit everybody. I mean, not just us at Hutch Putt, I mean, but it'll benefit this entire community, that thing going away. So, anyway, I really appreciate all the people just chipping in, because, I mean, that's what it takes a collective effort to make something happen, and, I mean, I know you guys get people mad at you about things, I'm just here to say thank you, thank you, thank you, you know.
And, and I know that, Chris, and I appreciate you being here and never hesitate to call.
Okay. Well, thank you all, thank you for serving, and let's get this thing down for this, for all of us, so, thank you.
I think we have more than one volunteer to be the one who hits the demo button, if it were going to be Dynamite. I know it probably won't be, but that would be fun. I think viewing the, the video and the pictures lays to rest any public concern that maybe this is a rehabilitative or rehabbable building. It would take a lot, even just to replace the fire suppression and the wiring, for instance. So, I, I look forward to the hearing and seeing, and hearing what the owner has to say. Maybe he has a bunch of money saved up to take this project on. If not, I hope we can return the project to, or return the, the site to rubble and, and move on. Thank you guys for going in, putting yourselves at risk for, to do the inspection, and you too. Thank you.
All right. I, you know, I, I won't inject emotion into this, but I've been driving by that place for years, and, you know, it's just a boarded up building. That's not what it is at all. I was shocked. I was shocked.
Is that why the video was silent, because of the comments you were making?
Probably. Probably. I, I, you know.
I will say the silence was due to the breathing apparatus that we were wearing. You would sound like Darth Vader, so I just, it, it was hard to really have a video and then have that loud breathing apparatus at the same time.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I think that, you know, I don't know what more there is to say, you know, we need to focus on the fact that it's just flat dangerous.
We need to get this public hearing going, so we can get the ball moving on this thing.
Yep, yep. Do I have a motion to that end?
Yeah, I'll move to approve a resolution fixing a time and a place at which the owner, his agent, any lien holders of record, and any occupant of such structure, the atrium hotel and convention center, may appear and show cause why such structure should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished and authorized a mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Nagers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Yes. Next item?
Do business, consider this strategic master plan for Hutchinson Zoo.
You guys don't like the zoo?
Yeah. What, you hate animals?
That's definitely a hard presentation to follow. This will be a lot more lighthearted and fun, so. Good morning, my name is Justin Combs, I'm the Director of Parks and Facilities. With me have Nicole Mance, our Zoo Director, and Michael Clifford from Tesseray, Tesseray, formerly known as WGM. Over the past year, we've had a great team work really hard on a strategic master plan for the zoo. I've been a part of a lot of master plans, a lot of planning projects, and this one definitely has stood out for the amount of engagement, not just within the community, but also with, with all zoo staff, with the board. It's just been a truly incredible process, so I want to thank the team for doing that, putting the effort in. This is not something that, that we've done lightly, or that they've done, done lightly. The other thing is, I am really excited about this plan. You know, I think it's, like I said, the process was fantastic, the, the engagement and the communication received from the public was great. And I'm also excited about the team we have in place to carry it out. I think we have the leadership in place to do this plan. This is a very ambitious plan. Michael, we'll get into a little bit more detail, you know, but I, I'm very excited about it. I think this, this project was, was really fantastic, I'm excited about the next 10 or 15 years at the zoo, so. With that, I want to... Uh, with that, I want to turn it over to Michael.
Awesome. Well, thanks for letting me, uh, come and join you for the morning. It's great to be here. Um, and thanks to Justin and Nicole for this whole process. I would just echo the same thing. It's been a, a joy to go through this and ideate and meet with all the staff. I think every single zoo staff was involved throughout the whole process. So, exciting to be able to share some of these, these, uh, these ideas that we've come up with. So a little bit of just kind of backstory, um, in case you don't know Tesserae, so we are a firm that's actually based out of Wichita, Kansas. But we work internationally, dedicated just in zoos and aquariums. I also serve a role as the Strategic Director for Reverse the Red, which is a global initiative to work, um, so we work with the World Association of Zoos and Aquariums, and I interface with about ten thousand conservation partners around the world. So what's really cool about that is knowing that your zoo is actually on par with the best zoos in the world. Um, it's, it's a member of the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, which represents only ten percent, the ten best percent of zoos in North America. So in case you didn't know that, I wanted you to know that. That's a really big deal. So that informs a lot of the work that we've been doing. So to speak a little bit to just the opportunity and the return here, um, this actually goes back to Mayor, a bit of what you were saying with your declaration in, in the parks in the morning, is zoos are a part of an incredible asset that makes a community rich. And it gives us that enjoyment, that connection, that opportunity to be, uh, be a place that people feel safe, they feel excited, they can learn, they can go, they can spend time with families. It really is a community asset, and there's a lot to be gained by investing in and leaning into the future of the zoo. So a number of things that, I won't go into detail or read through these, but again, supporting tourism, bringing in additional dollars, increasing the state time as people visit, as well as increasing kind of the quality of life for citizens here. Uh, these are all things that we see, and then again, mentioning the unique experience as a Association of Zoo and Accredited Facility. So all of those elements, uh, and then, in case you don't know, which I'm sure you probably all do, but this zoo does amazing conservation and wildlife rehab work. It's, again, one of the top in the state. So something that you have here, I hope you're all very proud of what you have in your zoo. And again, I'm just going to brag on Nicole a little bit more, because I can, I get to work all across the country and see many, many zoos, and you really do have a stellar facility with a lot of opportunity. So without that, uh, without too much more, I want to kind of get into this. So here's your overall map. I know it may be a little small, I'm going to do some zoom-ins, so, uh, we'll get a little closer to some of these ideas in the future. But some of the things that drove our ideation and the process is we wanted to align with the overall strategy of the zoo and the city. So we've looked at all of the city plans, we've looked at the park plans, we've looked at the, the strategy for the zoo to make sure that these ideas are, are aligned fiscally, that we're being responsible when, uh, stewarding resources and dollars well. We also looked highly at the community experience. So how do we make sure that everybody who comes into the zoo has the best possible experience? What does that look like? As you know, you're in a state that has a number of other phenomenal zoos, um, some of those are pretty close to here, but what you have is different. It's unique, and there's an opportunity to do it, so there's no reason to try to become like Cedric County Zoo. That's not a good idea. So how do we identify what is unique about the Hutchinson Zoo, and let's lean into that and do that, be the best version of what that can be? So that really informed a lot of what we were doing. And then, of course, animal care and welfare is always at the top of the priority. How do we make sure that we are providing the best possible care, considering climate, um, temperatures, water allocations, all these different things that animals need? Uh, we could talk about that, it's really fun, but that's another conversation for another time. So a lot of animal care and welfare elements and AZA accreditation standards, and then the last kind of key thing was around staff involvement and staff engagement. So how do we make sure that they have really good places to work? Okay, so let's get into it. So here's a few of the ideas, I'm not going to talk about all of them, just going to kind of highlight a few of them. So the, one of the first ideas out is a new front entry. I do love your zoo, so what I'm about to say, please don't hear that any other way, but the entry sequence is kind of weird. You just don't quite know where the actual entrance is when you park in the parking lot. And so there's an opportunity there, we feel like, to really s- make a new statement that says, this is the entrance, this is who we are, and this is the kind of experience you'll have there. So the other thing we would bring up, as you can see it there, is actually the, um, Sulcata tortoises coming up to the front. So one of the first things you could do is come into the zoo, have this experience where you actually get to meet tortoises. Have you, any of you fed a tortoise? Yeah. It's really cool. Tortoises are awesome, right? They're just so fun and so neat. And so to bring that right up to the front, to set the stage for what the experience is going to be like. So this, the next idea out is to actually move the current farm and kind of the contact yard. There's a number of issues with that current space, but we can move that over and create a new kind of premier innovation, uh, farm and agricultural space. Again, it's a, it's an asset of this community that you are so agricultural, but that's not really reflected as well as it could be at the zoo. So how do we bring in and show people about aquaponics, uh, about water management and water usage and hydroponic systems? Looking at, imagining things like, uh, you can see the little, kind of the, um, arches over there. We envision that goats actually can just go right over the top of people. Um, they do it, they love it, we do this all over the country. And so allowing these animals to have much more dynamic spaces, which creates a better experience, still allowing for that contact and that kind of touch opportunity. But bringing this in and creating a new space that really, um, kind of sets the tone for something incredible and unique here. The next idea, and I apologize for the screen cropping that's happening there, but, so the next space is an event space and a dock area. So down in that corner, we want to put in a new event space that actually gives you that incredible view right across the water. We know that there's a need for more event venues, um, for places to be able to host parties, opportunities, weddings, whatever it may be. So we have the opportunity to do that there, and there's also the potential of adding in paddle boats, so we can do some additional revenue generation to help, um, offset some finances. And the zoo has already done the incredible new bison encounter, and so that takes advantage of that space there and really starts to activate this node and make it something that's real, a destination. People want to be, uh, want to be in that space and want to utilize that space to its fullest. Then, one of the more exciting ones, so one of the reasons we wanted to move the current contact farmyard out is that it may allow us to bring back an incredible species like grizzly bear. We were lucky enough as a team, we did the grizzly bear habitat at Great Ben Zoo a number of years ago. Incredible habitat, if you've gotten to go out there and see it, and the community loves it, there's this one little spot where there's, uh, a very safely designed, I want to clear, clear that out, uh, but a very safely designed crack in the rocks that there's actually no separation between you and the grizzly bears. And the bears love to come there and sniff, and so you can get your ear up to it and hear them, you know, like, it's really cool. Is that not, okay, I thought it was a good grizzly bear, but that's fine. I'm more of a rhino guy personally, but that's, we'll get into that. So, um, bringing in grizzly bear, we can do some really incredible things to that center section of the zoo, which is one of the older portions of the facility right now. So looking at doing that, and then one of the other opportunities that's amazing is with the paddle boats. Imagine actually being out on a paddle boat and getting to look over and see grizzly bears across the water. So we can start to just make these things that are really cool. They're not incredibly expensive to do, they're more about clever spacing and, and clever utilization of the assets that you have. So this would be an incredible thing to be able to bring that back, and particularly a species that a long time ago used to live here, and you would find out on the Great Plains. Okay, um, one of the portions, so kind of the northwest corner of the property, we'd look to actually do a prairie restoration project here. Some of this work's already underway, uh, but it's an area that would be pretty difficult to develop into major habitats. It's kind of on the inside and adjacent to the current train loop, uh, but we would look to actually bring that back and restore native prairie. Uh, the zoo already does incredible conservation work and, and propagation of endangered species and threatened species. And so this creates more space for the zoo to be able to do that and continue its rehabilitation work. Oh, and I'll back up one second. And we would allow, so that you can see the walking paths, so it would create kind of an extended walking path for those that do want to take a little bit more time while they're at the zoo and wander through the meadows and the grasslands and see some of the different species. They have the opportunity to do that. And then last is, this is kind of furthest down in the timeline here, but this would be a major expansion of a, uh, new prairie habitats. So using the additional land that's to the north, kind of northeast of the site, uh, on the backside of current bison. And so we'd be able to bring in a number of new species into that area, really highlighting all of the different incredible animals that, that would live in the Great Plains, um, and then creating this as a very immersive kind of a space. Right now, the zoo as it is today is what we would kind of call a walk and look zoo, where you walk and you look, and you walk and you look. Um, modern zoo design is more immersive, where you feel like you're actually engulfed and kind of surrounded by these habitats and these spaces. And we feel like there's a really good opportunity to do that, and because this is naturally a Great Plains and a great prairie, we can do that, uh, cost efficiently without recreating something like, you know, the Amazon jungle, which would be a little cost prohibitive, probably. So, um, with that, that is kind of just the last thing I'll leave with you is I genuinely believe you have an absolutely incredible opportunity here. What you have is a gem, it's unique, and I think leaning into what makes you unique and what makes this, uh, this special connection between your community and the animals that call the zoo home, you have an amazing opportunity to do that in a way that nobody else can. So these are just a few ideas, there's a lot more to it, but I'll stop there and see if you have any questions, or Nicole, if there's anything you'd want to add.
I know, um, I would just say that, um, well, thank you guys for all your support. And I know the conversation always comes up that whether we would at some point talk about having an admission fee, and that is something that I think we'll have to tackle in the next ten years. But we absolutely want to stay accessible, it's part of our core belief for this community. And so that's something that I think we have to just look at and how we be sustainable and do great work and be an asset to this community. But I think tourism, um, is something that we really haven't even scratched the surface of for us. Like, you get here, you find out about us, and then you're like, okay, I have an afternoon, or I can't get into Stratica, so we'll go to the zoo first, um, which is great. But I want people to say, they have a zoo, let's go see it.
I have a question along those lines. So is, is there a vision in the master plan? We talked, you talked about paddle boats and whatnot, for other upgraded experiences that may have some funds, uh, that might generate funds that are optional, that you don't have to pay for it, but...
We actually are already doing some of those special experiences, behind the scenes experiences, education programs. In the SIP, uh, request for twenty twenty-five is that, um, venue space. And I think that will help us drive revenue, so that's another additional option that doesn't affect admission. So it'll help us, um, be more fiscally responsible.
I just thought it was a, I, I like that approach to where people can still go and have the experience, but there's upgrades for, you know.
Petting a bear.
Put the mayor in the bear cage?
I mean, we could do a high five for sure. Right now, we can actually, you can actually shake hands with an otter. I don't know how many people know that, there it is.
Well, and with the birthday party package, um, you get to feed the tortoises, I don't know if there were other add-ons, but we, we chose the tortoises.
Yeah, tortoises, you can, um, have the mini farm to yourselves, you can feed bison, you can meet the otters. Um, we really have opened up all of those with birthday party experiences, um, just because we know, um, that's how people fall in love with animals, and that's why we're here. And so giving those opportunities wherever we can is really important to us.
What's, oh, sorry.
I was wondering, friends of the zoo, are they still popular? What do you got? Are they still working with you?
Yes, so they, Scott wasn't able to make it today, but, um, they were very much a part of this process, and they continue to be absolutely incredibly supportive for us.
One other question, now, the, this area, do you have enough land in the back of the zoo, or is it going to have enough land to do this master plan?
Yeah, so we have thirty-seven acres total, twelve of which are currently developed. So we have an amazing amount of space for the zoo. And we are actually, like Mike mentioned, um, when it comes to the prairie restoration next to the train loop and, um, on that east side, we call it the back pasture, um, that area, we are actually already working on the prairie grasses in that area because it's something we can do, um, with the NRCS at low to no cost. And, um, that will save us money later on when we go to build in that space, that we don't have to recreate an environment. It's already there for the animals that are supposed to live there.
So you say you're currently using twelve acres, how much more will this master plan, will you?
Not including the, if you include the prairie restoration, we get pretty close to developing almost all of it.
All but two and a half acres, the north end, we kind of earmarked that, um, on the northeast side by the shelter, um, the vacation yard. So we could ship the animals out there as you walk by, you never know what you might see, um, giving like mini farm animal space or anything like that. So we've activated, I think, almost all of the thirty-seven acres, but not necessarily built it, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
What does staffing look like when ten years from now or nine years from now, when the plan's fully implemented? What does your increase in staffing look like?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, that is something that as we start to acquire new species, we'll have to take a look at. So I don't have an exact number for you on that right now, but it is something that we'll have to make sure that we don't overburden our keeper staff with animals, and that we're able to still provide those guest experiences. So I can't tell you what, but I can tell you definitely it'll grow.
The train, is it still activated in the zoo?
It is, yes, and it's actually running better than ever, so it runs with our volunteer staff. So when, we, we do have it activated, um, six of the seven days a week right now, um, and it runs in March through October.
Well, I hope we keep the train with this master plan, just make the tracks bigger and going around it, I assume, right?
Yes, there is an option for that prairie, that we would keep it where it is, um, and then plan for it to be out so you actually could ride the train through the prairie and have sort of that experience that we all hear about in terms of what prairie grasslands used to look like and, and be up close with the animals that are there.
I don't know if you remember, I don't expect you to remember, but I remember, we used to drive through the park and the, the sections of the park was part of the zoo, I, I sold. But I don't want to tell you my age, you can figure it out by then, but that, that was great back then.
Yeah, so I'll age myself, because, um, I, I don't know if you guys know this, but I actually was born in Sterling, we lived in Hutch as a kid. Um, and my dad worked for Far Marco and we moved kind of around, but this, um, the zoo in Cary Park was my first zoo. And so, um, I used to beg to drive through to see all the animals, and, um, that kind of got me to where I am today. So to be able to come home three years ago and be able to lead this team and help with the next phases of the zoo is really personal for me. And I, I think that we can make it an absolute gem for the community.
Well, I appreciate your work, and, and as a grandpa, these are important things. I'm, I'm able to frequent three different zoos that are ten times as big as our zoo, but we have features in our zoo that those other ones don't have.
And we want to keep it that way.
Yeah.
We don't want to compete with Cedric, we don't want to compete with Tanganika, we want to be the best Hutchinson Zoo that we possibly can be.
I was trying to look up how far away you could hear a bear growl, because in DC, in certain part, if you're anywhere near the zoo, you can hear the lion roar in town, and it's, you're like, what the heck?
Yes.
So I was trying to look that up, but I think, I think the bear is really cool. Um, I love this idea.
You have people on Facebook saying, what was that boom, what was that growl?
I wasn't going to say it, but yes, new people will be like, there are bears here.
And my staff can train that, so, noon, every day.
And, and I'll offer a thought, just as you're all thinking about kind of the, the larger implications of investment in the zoo, particularly for tourism, for, for groups. We have a rule of thumb that we use all across the zoos, which is if you can get people to stay for ninety minutes, about ninety minutes is the window where they need food, beverage, play, there's kind of a general rule of thumb we use. And so right now, the state time is, is close enough to that, that you kind of do the zoo and you leave. Cause you can go, you know, you can exit, it's easier to go home, or go somewhere else. We don't have some of those things, and the downstream effects are, if we, if we can create more experiences and better exhibits, so if you have a more dynamic species like a grizzly, or you found a way to make, you know, the bald eagle experience isn't just looking at them, but all of a sudden you're seeing these amazing behaviors from these, these, these birds. As we extend that state time, then that gives us the opportunity to leverage concessions, which is another revenue opportunity internally. Or it's also then increasing the time that somebody is spending in the community. And so rather than just, oh, let's, let's book it back home, it's, well, let's go to that restaurant over there, or let's go pick up this. And so we use that as that kind of ninety-minute gauge, which I think sometimes is just helpful to have that state time figure, um, as you're thinking about. A lot of, a lot of how we're trying to ideate around the experiences is to drive some of... is to drive some of those additional impacts.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out.
The train just got slower.
That I've...
The train ride just got slower.
One thing that I've heard, as we talk about, you know, whether or not the zoo should charge admission, is finding a way to make it discounted or free for Hutch residents because we are already offsetting with our taxes. So, as you guys look at that structure, I hope that that's something that you consider. Or finding some other way to provide extra value to Hutch residents.
Yeah, absolutely, that is something that is really important to us. And certainly, when I first started, there was kind of a sense that maybe, like, we were free. So, you know, there's, there's that you charge for it and people see more value in it. But there's also that we're a free zoo, and so, like, what do we really need to invest? And I think we are, my staff especially right now, is really understanding that the people that they see every day are the ones that support them. And so, we're making those experiences, like you might see at a bigger zoo, happen on zoo grounds. So, you get to feed the tortoises, so you get to feed the bison, so you get to meet the otters, those sorts of things. Just so we can give back to the community, not only to love and engage those animals, but because we understand that that is where our funding, where their salaries come from.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the strategic master plan?
I'll make a motion to accept the strategic master plan for the Hutchinson Zoo.
A second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Item ten, report sitting officials.
Stacy?
Oh, I'll go first, yes. Yesterday, I went to Manhattan with some folks from the chamber and some folks from the city to participate in a new initiative called Love Kansas. Essentially, this is a state program, and I might call you up here, Lauren, so be prepared. State program through the Department of Commerce. And the goal is to recruit people to move back to Kansas. So, I gave you all a boomerang. This is the technical term for those of us who moved away and came back. And we participated in a pep rally, and we heard from electeds, we heard from other boomerangs. And then we also did a letter writing campaign. So, I wrote a letter to my friend in Colorado and my friend in DC and asked them to move back, mentioned the cost of living being lower, the quality of life. You know, houses are more affordable than where those two are. So, we also with this receive five thousand dollars. We were the first of, one of, in the first group of nineteen communities to sign on. With that, the chamber will receive funding next week and start, we'll all start planning what we can do with those funds, whether it's sponsoring class reunions in some way, buying Facebook ads to tell people about moving back to Hutchinson or Reno County in general. But it was really interesting to be a part of. I was actually dressed up like Sammy Salt Hawk for, I don't know, an hour. And it was very hot in there, but it was really fun. I didn't get to hear the full pep rally because I was dancing, but...
I have pictures.
Yeah, there's, there is video proof of it. But it's a really cool program, I gave you all magazines as well. So, I don't think I have, oh...
Just know, this work started two years ago. I remember meeting with the state officials at the airport steakhouse just as a brainstorming session, and it's good to see something, you know, happening with this.
Yeah, and I, I think the, another benefit is that as other communities are brainstorming what events or incentives they can provide, we will be of benefit to the brainstorming sessions as well, to learn what they're doing. Because, not necessarily that we're in competition against them. I think we would prefer somebody move here versus Dodge City, and Dodge City would feel the opposite way. But, you know, if they're, if they think of something to do that's of little or no cost, then we can piggyback off and steal all of their ideas, and everybody's ideas as well. So, that's something that I look forward to. I know John and I have had a lot of conversations about this, of how can you incentivize people or even just get the word out and tell people about Hutchinson, about Reno County, in order to get people to move back here and see the value and that sort of thing. There is a question that I wanted to follow up with, Enrico. I was asked about, and I've been curious and trying to follow along with, and Brian, this might be for you, where do we stand with the, running the pipeline to Yoder? Last I read on the county was that we were in the middle of drawing a contract on that and that it's still up in the air, but it hasn't been taken up in a while. So, I didn't know if there was anything to report.
Brian, you want to take that? I certainly can.
I can take it, it's been submitted to the county for their review.
Okay.
And we expect them to approve it.
Okay, at any, is it on the agenda anytime soon, or...
I can't speak for their agendas.
Okay. Do you know when we sent it to the county?
It was sometime last week that we did.
Stacy, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Did those people write you back that you wrote letters to?
Not yet, we just sent them yesterday, so I don't know yet.
And the second question is, when you were dressed like a Sammy Salt Hawk today, people realize it was real short Sammy Salt Hawk?
Well, the head is really big, so, yeah. I was standing next to Baby J, and we were about the same size. So, yeah, but Woo-Shock and the Ichabod, they must have been six-five and had a costume on. They were huge.
Scott?
Yeah, so, we had, I had my community meeting on last Tuesday, and we had, I think, around forty people show up. I think we'd had, I think we'd had a few more if we'd had a little bit more notice, done a little bit farther out. But we talked about some things like the, we have a lot of water issues up in the northeast. So, we've, we were working on a bunch of petitions, trying to get water to the Panorama area and then out east to the Spyglass area. There's several homes that are running out of water, almost no water. And we had a lot of great people show up with a great comments. And I, I mean, that's what we signed up for, was to have the public come out and hear what their needs are so we can take care of them. And I'll probably be having another one here in a couple of months. But I just want to, I just want to follow up with some of the things we, you know, we did and talked about. We, we as a council need to talk about the, the traffic calming on some things we can do for the traffic on Panorama. It's just, I don't know if we need to get it on an agenda item to talk about it some more in depth because it is, it is a true issue, actually, hearing all those people talk about the, the speed that going up. I think they talked about, when we did the traffic study, that there were speeds of up to sixty mile an hour going up Panorama. So, it's something we need to address to get that slowed down before somebody gets hurt or killed. And then, another thing I think we need to address as a council, I know we've had this on the agenda, was the noise ordinance, that was brought up. It's something that we really need to get back at, and I know we haven't looked at it since I've been on. And then I think, let's see, and then next Tuesday, I'm going to another meeting with the Spyglass area to discuss their water needs. So, there's a petition going around for that area. So, hopefully, we can get some resolution for that as well. Let's see, and then, I also wanted to bring up, the race is coming July nineteenth. I want everyone to put that on the calendar to come out. It's gonna be a really cool race with the Crown Series, a hundred laps. And as of yesterday, they had the Kaylee Bryson. She's the first female to win a feature event, and she's actually committed to coming here. She's twenty-three years old as well. So, she's young and a female, and she's really doing well. So, everybody get that on the calendar to come out for that, and I think that's all I have.
All right, Virgil?
Yes, first thing I want to say, I haven't had my community meeting for a long time for the simple reason I was waiting for our new city manager to get here. He has, and, and we're gonna have it on the twentieth of July. I was gonna have it this week, but I will get it, we're on the twentieth of July at the Zone. That's a Saturday, and he's gonna be here, all it has to do with his baby coming, if he makes it or not. So, the twentieth of July, we'll have a community meeting on the south end of town down there at the Zone. We'll get that back going, and I'm gonna probably have a lot of more Caryville, excuse me? Nine o'clock at the Zone. And I need to get the Caryville, they've been calling me a lot, so I need to get them in the meeting and see what they got going. Of course, they call me all the time, I know what they got going. So, anywhere at five, at nine o'clock on the twentieth at the Zone. The founders tonight will have a meeting at five-thirty at the Zone. So, we, I haven't been there because I've been tied up, I plan to be there tonight. And again, I got some ideas for them to talk to them about. August twenty-fourth is the Zone's picnic, I received, I think so, that's what Darryl told me today. Their annual, their second annual picnic they're gonna have in twenty-fourth of August. Let's see here, a little bit, talk about Mr. Fast because it's one of my favorite ones. They're gonna have the Brick Pock, Brick Fiesta coming up. And my, one of my favorite bands is gonna be there, the Defidencia will be there. They're a great band, I love them, and you know me, I like to dance. So, I'm excited, very, very excited about Defidencia coming out. So, try to come out, I think it's September twenty-fourth, am I right, sir?
That's correct.
That's correct, so hopefully, one of these days, I'm gonna get him to dance. So, we'll get him out there.
I do at home.
At home. I think in all that, I think everything is coming up, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the city. They're doing my, my team here, not my team, your team is doing a great job. It's, you'll be seeing a lot of changes in Hutchinson. We all have to work together to get the changes done. So, there's a lot of things we gotta get going to work together, get stuff done. And other than that, I think you're doing a great job, keep it up. Mary Grace, you're still in here with us, you're doing a great job too, so keep it up. And all, other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Steve, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Did you, I know we had talked last year about being in the Fourth of July parade. Did you make that happen this year?
I didn't get that happened this year. Probably will make a good on the Christmas parade, okay?
John, you have nothing?
I have a couple things.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I was gonna, I was gonna mention, we have a parade coming up on Thursday, Thursday morning, ten AM, if I remember correctly, Fourth of July parade. Very excited, remember the reason for the treason this season. The zoo, it's, it's interesting because we had this presentation and, and the juxtaposition, because I'm working on big words, between what we have going on here and some adjustments at one of the zoos in Wichita in regards to how they're charging. It gives us an opportunity to really market this gym we have and what it, what it can, what's available for people as an alternative to going to Goddard, to go to the zoo. I would encourage again to go to renosurvey.com and take that survey to help, help guide decisions, not just for city council, but for other nonprofits and organizations in our community on what's important. And then also, you know, this atrium process, you know, I'm pushing pretty hard on this, and I, and I just want to keep remembering, reminding everybody that I really want to see us get more aggressive in regards to not just code enforcement, but how we're treating non-residential properties in our community. And I know we've talked about this a lot, and I want to keep pushing for that. And then I have a question in regards to Thirtieth Street. Looks like we did some repairs on Thirtieth Street. I'm assuming that was warranty repairs from the work that was done. And it looks like it, the cones have been picked back up, so I think that's done. I know a lot of people have been pointing out that the road repairs on Thirtieth had some peeling, some delaminating, and I think we got that taken care of. So, yeah, let's celebrate Fourth of July. I will be going to one of my favorite tents, and I will be launching stuff into the air according to our updated city code as of last year.
Yes.
Yes, I will be taking full advantage of that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
You've mentioned a few of the things that I would mention. I attended the Southwest Bricktown meeting last night. Things are on track for, for that party in September. I am going to have a Woody Seat meeting, a, a, a meeting with the stakeholders in that part of town for the Woody Seat, the final design plan, to make sure that is what the folks, you know, what, what we're, what we're going to do with some feedback, making sure that we follow through with the promises we made a year ago. I want to have that meeting, it's yet to be determined when those plans will be ready and finalized. Still working on some lighting issues up, up top on the, on the roads. Also, had the opportunity to meet with a company in Kansas City over the last couple of weeks. Might have good news to share, possible expansion here in Hutchinson or a move to Hutchinson. So, anyway, there's a lot going on in our city, and I appreciate the work of our city staff. We, we ask a lot of them, and they, they show up, and I appreciate it. Enrico?
A few items, I, I did plan to address the noise ordinance. So, we are doing some research into that. A challenge with the, the noise ordinance, at least a broad sweeping one, is that there could be some constitutionality issues with that. So, we just have to really understand what that looks like from our end of enforcement. And so, we're looking at best practices that other cities are doing, how they're implementing it, how they're enforcing it. So, I did want to share that. A really minor thing that we did add a section to the agenda called future agenda items, and that would hopefully just give you a sneak peek of what would be coming next. And that way, you can kind of hopefully gauge, like, how long the meeting would be, just for budgeting your own time appropriately. And I just got slipped a note here that the fireworks show is gonna start at eight. The show starts around nine forty-five PM. Sylvia?
That it?
Think so.
All right, we have a couple special executive sessions. Do I have a motion on the one that's listed on the agenda, and how long will it take?
Are, are we doing a study session as well?
Yes.
Yes.
So, executive sessions, then study session?
So, this would be item twelve.
Yeah, there are two executive sessions and then a study session.
There's a study session.
I, I thought we would do the executive session first, both of them first.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right, yeah, but we do have a budget talk later, open meeting.
I moved to recess into executive session pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations exception, KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-three, in order to discuss issues related to the 2025 contract negotiations with the city's bargaining units, the open meeting to resume in the city council chambers at...
Let's try eleven forty.
Eleven forty AM.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Yes.